Yes, we are just double checking here. Just.
Hey. Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the special meeting of the Santa Clara City Council. I'd like to call it to order. Could you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? And remain standing for the Statement of Values?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we gather, we humbly seek blessings upon this meeting. May we act with strength, courage, and will to perform our obligations and duties to our people with justice to all. Let us seek wisdom so that we may act in best interest of our people, our neighbors, and our country. All this we ask so we may serve our community with fairness and respect, putting their needs before all. Thank you.
Thank you. Please be seated. Roll call Assistant City Clerk.
Councilmember Watanabe. Here. Councilmember Chahal.
Present.
Councilmember Hardy.
Present.
Councilmember Park.
Here.
Councilmember Becker.
Here.
Mayor Gilmore.
Here.
Let the record reflect that Council Vice Mayor Jane is absent. May I read the Statement of Behavioral Standards?
Yes, please.
The City of Santa Clara has adopted a code of ethics and values and behavioral standards for public meetings to promote and maintain the highest levels of conduct. This includes mutual respect, robust discussion, and allowing city business to be done in an efficient and consistent manner. Please note that as a presiding officer, the mayor's direction in matters of process and decorum should be followed. And that use of the gavel indicates all conversations must conclude.
Thank you. Thank you, Nora. Thank you for that. I would like to.
Do you make a motion to excuse Councilmember Jane?
This isn't a regular meeting, so I don't. Does it? I'm going to ask our Assistant City Attorney, does it matter? For excusing, it wasn't a regular meeting, it's an emergency meeting. Okay. So. All right. So, good afternoon, everyone, and welcome. For today's meeting, the city continues to use a Zoom feature to allow public participation from the safety of your home or office. Members of the public can join via the link and or call into the Zoom meeting displayed on the screen now. If you would like to speak on an agenda item or during public presentations, please raise your hand on the Zoom application or press star nine on your phone. Please only raise your hand while the item you're seeking to speak on is being presented. Staff will enter your name or the last four digits of your phone number, and I will call on you to speak. As a friendly reminder, members of the public have two minutes to speak on an agenda item and three minutes on public presentations, topics not on the agenda. Prior to each agenda item, staff will lower each hand to ensure that members of the public are requesting to speak under the appropriate agenda item. You may also submit your comments on the e-comment feature available on the Santa Clara Legis藏page or via public comment at santaclara.ca.gov, public comment at santaclara.ca.gov, and the comments will be read into the record. Also, another reminder, if you are a lobbyist, you need to identify yourself as a lobbyist before you speak and who you are working for. So now let's move on to the council agenda. So we have a requested closed session item, public employee discipline dismissal release government code 54957. Assistant City Attorney, did you want to talk now or should I go to public comment?
Actually, I think I should talk now, Mayor.
Go ahead.
As you know, I cannot represent the city council in this matter, but I would like to say that this is a complex legal issue, both procedurally and substantively. The council should have an attorney to assist and guide you through this process. That step should be completed, in my opinion, by authorizing one of you to retain legal counsel to represent the council, your city council as a body, prior to taking any other action in this matter, to ensure that whatever actions and discussion do happen are done in an appropriate procedural manner. I think this is extremely important, and that's my advice to the city council.
Can I, can I ask you, Assistant City Attorney? Can you confirm that you contacted some law firms and they turned down the engagement to be with us this evening?
Yes, I, I did. Because of this, like I said, I'm not able to advise or represent the city council in this matter. I did reach out to see if I could get other council on very short notice to come to this meeting tonight, and I was not able to. There was, they declined.
Okay, so are you, do you have a recommendation as to whether we should go into closed session?
I can't tell you that you, that you can or cannot go into closed session. What I can tell you is that my recommendation is that the first step that you take is to authorize one of you to go out and retain counsel on behalf of the body. It before, before you, you know, walk, go down this path any further.
All right. Thank, thank you very much. Councilmember Becker, your hand is up.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So after public comment, I'd like to adjourn to closed session. Thank you.
Okay, so we are now going to hear from any member of the public that would like to speak on the issue that's on our closed session, this, our session this evening. We can start with Kirk. Go ahead, Kirk. Can you? I don't, I don't even see the microphone. Do we? Assistant City Clerk? Oh.
Sure. Don't know what's going on here.
Oh, there we go. Okay, Kirk, go ahead, Kirk, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As if today's news overseas about the unnecessary war happening in Ukraine isn't bad enough, this council has made it possible to feel even worse. And while there's no loss of life here, I'm literally watching the city incur self-inflicted wounds. The 49er-influenced council majority decide to fire the city attorney in the middle of eight active lawsuits against the city from the 49ers. The same council members harass city staff and create a miserable place, miserable place to work. Not that the council members really notice, since they don't actually work for the city. They just order the staff to do whatever they want, or more realistically, the outcomes from the dozens of meetings they've had with the 49ers. And then that same council majority had the audacity to complain when the city manager reported the challenges the city is facing during the priority and goal-setting session. What do you expect? And now you want to terminate the city manager? Is this council majority delusional? You haven't even fired, filled the city attorney job yet. This is a $3 billion city, and in the span of 13 months, you have made petty moves to show the power of your newly formed majority. Yet you take no ownership of the wreckage you leave behind. You are not leading, you are pawns, and I'm sorry for the voters that put faith in you. And to see council members Becker, Hardy, Park, and Chahal list their names to terminate the city manager without cause like they did with the city attorney is disgraceful. The city is not a toy, and even when I was battling the corrupt council under different leadership, never did I see this kind of recklessness. Your activism in the past is permanently revoked. You are officially the problem.
Thank you. Lori, go ahead, Lori, please. Can we get Lori on? With the microphone? There we go. Okay, muted Lori.
Mute.
There you go.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Lori.
Thank you very much. So I would like to say, first of all, show the proof. There is no, I have no qualm between person to person, but to hear the thing over and over about the 49ers is a joke. The 49ers are not backing anyone. You have no proof, you have it not have it on paper. And what's really sad is that we have homeless people that I feed every day living on the streets in Santa Clara, when you have a city manager making over $700,000 a year. It's a shame and it's embarrassment for me to say that I live in a place where I have to go feed homeless people when not, when all of these people that make all this money are at their homes in their nice warm homes, not out there on the streets. So you know what? With all the things that we've seen in the past, all the misuse of money, go for it. I'd like to see her gone. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob, go ahead, Bob. If we can get you on. There you go. Go ahead.
Yeah, good evening. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. Obviously, this special meeting was called to terminate, I'm sorry, City Council, I think Assistant Manager, to terminate the city manager. That will happen because obviously the major, the new majority of council wants that done. They were directed to do that, and they will do that. I'm concerned about the council not listening to the best legal advice that they can have, which was from the Assistant City Attorney just a second ago, advising not to go into legal or to go into closed session. Closed session is allowed to talk about certain things. It's not a requirement. Every meeting this council has can be conducted in open session. This council must listen to the best legal advice given to them. If this council was to go into closed session and terminate an employee, in this case, the city manager, my God, this city would be open to huge legal liability. Who are they talking to before Hardy, Chahal, Park, and Becker? Who gave them this legal advice? The only other people they meet with are the San Francisco 49ers. Three of these council members, Jane, who is not here tonight, Becker, and Park have not even sat in the big chair on the dais in front of the public. If they want to fire the city manager, make it for cause. If they don't, things will happen, legal things such as recalls, and the first person to be recalled would be the low-hanging fruit. And I think that would be the one that has less than 50% majority in a vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Deborah, go ahead, Deborah, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm currently the Chair of the Cultural Commission, but today I'm speaking on my own behalf. As we are all assuming that the speculation about terminating city manager Santana is true, I would like to understand what I see as an intentional and premeditated plan to do so. When I first saw the request to call this notice that was filed on Wednesday, February 23rd, I thought to myself, that was quick. It was just in the council meeting held Tuesday, February 22nd, that the city manager publicly questioned Al Guido's possible conflict of interest regarding the 2026 FIFA World Cup. By 9:42 the next morning, four council members had physically signed the request to call a special meeting. But I paused to think about how Councilmember Hardy had very clearly mentioned during the council meeting that she was calling in from Disneyland where she was celebrating her grandchild's birthday. I wondered, how did her signature get on that document so quickly? Then I looked closer. Councilmembers Becker, Hardy, and Park had signed the document last week on Thursday, February 17th, and Councilmember Chahal signed it on Saturday, February 22nd. This to me indicates that there were conversations and consensus well before Tuesday's city council meeting that the city manager should be terminated without cause, just as city attorney Doyle was terminated without cause. This action not only leaves the city open to potential lawsuits for wrongful termination, but also further damages the city's ability to conduct normal business, sign contracts, provide oversight in the stadium authority, and further damages its reputation among current staff and potential new hires. Deanna Santana should not be fired for doing her job. She has done nothing wrong and has done many things right. It is patently obvious, as many currently speculate, that the four of the 49er five who signed this document have privately committed based on direction from the 49ers.
Thank you very much, Deborah. Appreciate it. Ashley, go ahead, Ashley. Ashley. Get Ashley on.
I'm sorry, Mayor. I think she has an old version. It says to make her panelist in order to hear her comments. Would you like me to move her over?
Go ahead. Ashley.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead, please.
Okay, okay, perfect. So I wanted to say that it's about time. What has the city manager done for the city other than spend a lot of money on her cronies? She's the highest or the second highest paid in the state, and she has been fired in multiple cities. So I am happy to see her go. Thank you.
Thank you. Edward, go ahead, Edward, please. Edward?
All right, I'm unmuted.
There you go.
Say that, yeah, I don't even know if our last election was truly legit. It was the first time ever. I voted in person. I always vote in person. And it was the first time ever that I was told to vote with a Sharpie. I did not have to show a photo ID. I was told to put my ballots into a machine. Yeah, I don't know if it was a Dominion voting machine or what it was, but Dr. Shiva, along with military intelligence, did provide evidence that there was massive voter fraud in our country. So I don't even know if our last voting system in Santa Clara County was really official, and I think there should be a nod it. So I don't even know if these people sitting on the council are official. But yeah, I think that's something that should be looked at, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Edward. Chris, go ahead, Chris, please.
Yeah, thank you. Dear Mayor and Council, my name is Christopher Jackson. I'm a 30-year resident of Santa Clara. Worked for the city for 14 years, and I'm the President of Unit 9 Miscellaneous and Classified Management Employees. Unit 9 was surprised to learn of an emergency session scheduled for today to discuss public employee discipline dismissal release. As the city manager is currently the only filled position that reports directly to the city council, we can only assume this is in regards to Deanna J. Santana. Normally, emergency meetings are called due to an unforeseen event that is urgent in nature. While we are unaware of any legal or ethical violations by the city manager that would warrant such an emergency meeting, we acknowledge the council's right to conduct regular performance evaluations of the city manager and the city attorney. However, generally, performance evaluations are conducted according to regular schedule with ample notice. We ask that you approach this meeting with care and integrity, taking the following into consideration. Relationships require attention and work to establish and maintain. Issues can be weighty and controversial and can be unduly influenced by external pressures. Staff is responsible to provide counsel with impartial feedback in response to priorities or initiatives based on ethical, legal, or capacity considerations in order for the city to properly function. The organization's performance under the city manager's leadership, the city is successfully navigating the challenges created by a global pandemic and continuing, continuing to deliver core services, achieve numerous accomplishments and awards. Consider your obligation to conduct yourselves free of any personal biases or political motivations. Remind yourself of the city's existing workloads and priorities, ongoing budget shortfall, staffing shortages, and existing challenges to recruit and, and retain employees. Evaluate the number of Bay Area agencies seeking a new city manager and the success or lack thereof they have had in identified qualifying candidates. And if, after careful consideration, council believes a significant change is warranted, we ask that you do full, do so in a meaningful manner with a thoughtful succession plan, identified to gracefully transition this critical leadership position. Anything short would be a disservice to the community and to city staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other member of the public that would like to speak on this item? Call in user one. Go ahead, please. Go ahead, call in user one.
Hello?
Yes. Hello? Go ahead.
It's, it's refreshing to finally see the council take the appropriate action if this is the need for city manager Deanna Santana. It's almost hysterically funny that many people are trying to rewrite history when they arrogantly call some people the Niner Five, seeing that Lisa Gilmore, in collusion and cahoots with Kathy Watanabe and the 49ers, brought the red and gold plague to Santa Clara. Let's not forget who brought them here. The people who got support from the last election had nothing to do with it. They voted against it and campaigned strongly against it. What has Deanna Santana do, done for Santa Clara besides take their money? She has not even stepped forward to give back a raise. She threatened to sue them if she didn't get a raise. So amen, I hope the rumor is true. Good run to bad rubbish. It's about time they flushed that last commode. Thank you.
Thank you. Herbeer, go ahead, Herbeer.
Thank you very much. I'm here to the same topic. Firstly, Deanna, this is not personal. Please do not take it as, but it is an objective view. I'm glad to see that this, this new blood is in the council is brave enough and courageous enough to clean up our city instead of be bullied by the same archaic influencers to mislead and misdirect the people who don't track the ongoing data points that show the mis, misleadership we have. Our city needs to be more productive, transparent, innovative, and financially sound. Instead, over the years, I have seen our city go into further deficit, cutting our services and paying out more money than they need to. There have been continuously poor decisions, becoming more divisive, poorly managed business relationships, creating lawsuits against the Chamber of Commerce for the immediate power needs of that election, handling the CVAR lawsuit badly, hiring expensive outside-first-level leadership without promoting anybody internally who has been with our city for decades. The truth is, an overly excessively played city manager and leadership was done to have and to act in the direction of the past city councils who are trying to keep their positions. In doing so, the city has increasingly gone in deficit, like cutting the Visitors Bureau $1.5 million of savings in 2018 for the short term. With that is the cost of those managers. But that put us into more deficit without looking ahead and realizing what could happen in the future when you have something like COVID occur. We lost all the potential revenue that could have been in our coffers. We went from $2 million in deficit to 20, to 10, to 21, to 33, and 45, and now even more so. The point is long-term. This is not the right way we run a city. Our city is being run for power. It is not being run to give our citizens what they deserve, which is community benefit. Cities are not in the leadership, are not in the power to take over and become self-centered and focused on self-determination and self-preservation. Their purpose is to serve the people, and it's about time we start doing that.
Thank you. Lee, go ahead, Lee, please. You can unmute. There you go. Lee?
Okay. My name is Lee Brofman, and I am actually a voter.
If this council, if this council is actually in here to do something in closed-door session like fire our city manager without cause, you're leaving us open to even more deficits after we get through with the lawsuit filed by the previous city attorney. I'm sure there'll be another one. Also, think of the staff. You really are not taking into consideration, the staff are going to be without a leader. And I laugh at some of the facts I hear from previous speakers about the past. You know, the past is the past. It doesn't matter how those 49ers got here. They're here, and they're obviously putting a lot of undue influence on the city council. I just want you to remember, this is an election year, and I think this is a prime example of this council's lack of governance. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike, go ahead, Mike.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. For me, this is a really sad event tonight. I was a dedicated employee for 34 years, and I had the privilege of working with some amazing employees throughout my year to provide great service to our community. In 2012, I was elected police chief, and I had the opportunity to work with three different city managers. In 2017, when the current city manager, Deanna Santana, came, I was looking forward to working closely with her, but I found the next two years to be very horrific and very stressful for me. The city manager refused to work with me since I was an elected police chief. Typically, we would meet weekly or monthly with the previous city managers, but Deanna refused to meet with me. I was working with Walter Rosman, who was the person she brought in from Sunnyvale to work with her, and Walter and I worked until he left because of the stresses in the city manager's office. I later found out while working that she was meeting with the POA, constantly with the POA president. The POA president is Allison Berry Wilkinson, who is the same attorney that personally represents her. I presented it to her that this was a conflict of interest, since she bargains with Unit 2 and also provides discipline for the officers, but she's felt differently. I still keep in touch with several of the employees throughout the city, and they're extremely frustrated and feel that there's a lack of confidence in the city manager. And they just feel that she does not have the best interest of the department. When she first became here, she also replaced a lot of the department heads with some outrageous salaries, and that really deteriorated the morale of the departments throughout the city, because now the long-term employees felt there is no succession plan or future promotions. It's really sad, but I hope that the city council really considers replacing the city manager.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, Assistant City Clerk, do you have any comments? E comments?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I do.
Okay.
Our first one is from Susan Hinton. News states that the city manager will be discussed. What happens when the city doesn't have a lawyer? And also, because the city manager is removed, can't write or monitor contracts. Writing and monitoring contracts is the city manager's job. Can council members be found liable for incompetence? Ruining both the legal and financial health and reputation of a city certainly points to irresponsible and incompetent behavior. Civil lawsuits filed by citizens are possible despite the Brown Act. End of comment. The next e-comment is from Lala Veridi. The 49er conspiracy theories that Mayor Gilmore, council member Watanabe, and city manager often make sound a lot like a Trumper. Ms. Santana is a terrible city manager and seems to only work for the mayor and council member Watanabe, not the entire council. The Santa Clarians deserve better after Gilmore and Watanabe, aka the original Niner Sisters, lured the Niners to Santa Clara and now act like they were not responsible. Face the facts, Mayor Watanabe and city manager, you have failed the residents. End of comment. And I have another two emails here. First one is from Carolyn McAllister. It has been discussion among residents that four of you, Becker, Sha Hall, Park, and Hardy, plan to fire city manager Deanna Santana. Don't do it. I'm sure Jane will march with you four, because you five have united yourselves as the 49er Five and have danced to Jed York's drum for the last several years. You can city attorney Brian Doyle, which was a huge mistake. I've heard all of you speak community and residence, but when it comes time to vote, you 49er Five have always been to York and the 49ers. You five, Becker, Hardy, Park, Jane, Sha Hall are an embarrassment. Santa Clara needs a strong city manager, and Deanna Santana provides that. Santa Clara was always the city employees wanted to work in. You 49er Five have created such a dysfunction on the city council that employees are leaving their positions for other employment. Wake up and look at what you are doing. Our beloved city has received a lot of negative press because of your actions. From a model city, from other communities to emulate, we are now led by five council members who are obligated or beholden to Jed York. What a terrible chapter in Santa Clara history. End of comment. And the last one is from Curtis Fisher. I am very alarmed that several of our council members are meeting privately with San Francisco 49er leaders. It has been reported by several sources they vote to mitigate problems for the 49ers, including firing the city attorney or defending our city against their lawsuits. This is unbelievable, shameful activity that has to stop. It should never have occurred to start. Who do they work for? The citizens of the 49ers? Why are they meeting secretly with no records of their discussions? I'm requesting the city provide me and others answers. I'm also requesting you provide information on how to start a recall for these council members. These persons are not worthy of representing us. End of comment. And that's all I have.
Thank you. We have another public person, AAS. E. Go ahead, please.
Hi, I'm a teenager here in Santa Clara, and from my observation, I have just noticed that city manager Santana has been at the core of the financial mismanagement we see in Santa Clara and has made no real effort to curb spending, all while collecting an increasingly large salary for herself and for her lieutenants. Thank you.
Thank you. Is any more members of the public? Revender, go ahead, Revender. You're muted. You have to unmute, Revender.
Sorry about that. Thank you.
There you go.
Mayor and Council for allowing me to speak. My name is Revender Law, local business owner, UPS store. I don't have all the facts whether the city manager should be fired or should stay. I can only speak of my own personal experience with the city manager. A few years ago, I was falsely accused by the city manager and the city attorney of doing an improper contract with the convention center. After it was all said and done, I still got a contract with the new management company and didn't need council or city manager approval, and I was thrown under the bus and made it look like I was doing something improper when I really wasn't, never received apology. Second thing was the firing of the CVB and all of the CVB people. That was done without any plan. Here we are going on three or more years longer, and all the CVB people were fired, and there's still no CVB, no DMO, nothing to show for several years. So firing a whole staff of people without a plan going forward doesn't seem like a very good idea coming from the city manager. And those were two, both of my experiences with her. They were not positive, and like I said, I don't have all the facts whether she's doing great or getting paid too much or any of that. But I do know that my personal experiences as a local business owner, somebody who was falsely accused by the city manager, I just, that's just my side of the story. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Assistant City Clerk, do we have everyone?
Yes, Madam Mayor, that's it.
Okay, thank you. All right, so now we're going to convene to closed session. I just want to say that we've been given advice by the city attorney not to convene without legal representation. So I just wanted to say that I'm going to go to closed session under protest. I'm going to still go, and with that in mind that we have no legal representation. Council member Watanabe?
Thank you, Mayor. Was there a second on the motion?
What motion?
I, Council member Becker, didn't, he made a motion about going to closed session.
I don't think we need a motion for that. There's no motion needed for that.
Because I wanted to, I wanted to make a substitute motion to follow along with the Assistant City Attorney's recommendation about not going into closed session because of the fact that we don't have an attorney to represent us and to appoint the mayor to go outside, to find an attorney to represent the city council on this issue.
Mayor, I just, there was no original motion by Council member Becker, because it's just moving along on the agenda. So just for the purposes of...
All right, again, I said I'll go to closed session under protest.
Well, I will go on to closed session under protest as well.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we will now convene to closed session. Everyone?
Well, I will go on to closed session under protest as well.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we will now, um, convene to closed session. Thank you. 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 Thank you.[189.95]
Here's an update. The council will resume at about 6:20. Please stand by.
Ready when you are.
Okay, is everyone present? So the city council met in closed session and the council did take three actions in closed session. So I will read the actions and the vote on the actions. The first action, a preliminary resolution of the city of Santa Clara relating to the removal from office of the city manager of the city of Santa Clara. Pursuant to section 806 of the city charter, the city council may adopt a preliminary resolution of removal stating the reasons for the city manager's removal. And whereas section one and section six of the city manager's employment agreement state that the city manager serves at the will of the city council may be terminated at any time with or without cause and has no right to pre or post separation due process other than set forth in section 806 of the city charter. And whereas the city council has a lack of confidence in the city manager. Now therefore be it further resolved by the city of Santa Clara as follows. Number one, based on lack of confidence in the city manager, the city council hereby adopts this preliminary resolution of removal from office of the city manager consistent with section 806 of the city charter and the employment agreement of the city manager. The resolution, this resolution is effective as of the date of its adoption. The vote passed four to two. We have council member Hardy voting yes, council member Chahal voting yes, council member Park voting yes, council member Becker voting yes, council member Watanabe voting no, and I Mayor Gilmore voted no. We have one absence, council member Jane. That was the first action that was taken. Second action taken in closed session. A preliminary resolution of the city of Santa Clara suspending the Santa Clara city manager from duty pursuant to city charter section 806. Be it resolved by the city of Santa Clara as follows. Whereas pursuant to section 806 of the city charter, the city council may suspend the city manager from duty. And whereas section 806 of the city charter sets forth conditions relating to the suspension from duty of the city manager. Now therefore be it further resolved by the city of Santa Clara as follows. Number one, the city manager is hereby suspended from duty with pay pursuant to section 806 of the city charter. Number two, the city shall comply with the conditions of section 806 of the city charter relating to suspension from duty of the city manager. And number three, this resolution is effective of the date of its adoption. And the vote on that was four to two. Council member Hardy voted yes, council member Chahal voted yes, council member Park voted yes, council member Becker voted yes, council member Watanabe voted no, and myself Mayor Gilmore, I voted no. There's one absence, council member Jane. The third action that the council took in closed session was to hold a meeting within a week to appoint an acting interim city manager. I just want to clarify, there's nothing, no process before that. It's just to hold a meeting within a week to appoint an acting interim city manager. And that passed four to two. Council member Hardy voted yes, council member Chahal voted yes, council member Park voted yes, council member Becker voted yes, council member Watanabe voted no, and Mayor Gilmore, I voted no. We have one absence, and that is council member Jane. So that was the action taken in closed session. I'm going to go to public presentations and then we will come back to the city. Well, actually, if there's council members that would like to make comments, probably now is the right time to do that before I go to public presentations. Council member Becker.
Yeah, so on that one last motion we made about having another meeting, I don't know if there's a certain government code you need about, I guess it's public public employee appointment for acting city manager in terms of city manager. I guess there's a section code you need to call. So I don't know if that's something that city staff does on their own, or is it something that we have to direct?
This is all council directed. The city staff is not involved in this. So this was not discussed in closed session. So that's why I asked you to clarify, and I wanted to clarify.
Okay.
All right. So I just want to say that I, with the actions that the city council has taken, I really question the adherence to the city charter, the city manager's employment agreement, and the Brown Act. Clearly, clearly, the council majority has put themselves and the city in, and the city of Santa Clara in a really precarious situation. I've been in public office for several decades. No city council has ever gutted city hall. And put our residents in jeopardy with no management at city hall. No city council has so obviously put a private interest above the public interest. And I think this is a really, really sad day in Santa Clara history. Council member Watanabe.
Thank you, Mayor. You getting an echo. You have expressed a lot of sentiments that I feel as well. From day one since of this current administration, there have been attacks on the city attorney, the city manager. There's been censorship of me, the admonishment of the mayor. Despite Herculean efforts, and I say Herculean, because our city manager and staff during the pandemic took incredible actions to put the residents first. And were exemplary so much that neighboring cities asked for support. How did you do it? How did you manage? Because they saw what was achieved in such a short period of time. I'll also mention the other changes that have taken place, like the curfew. No outreach to the residents. All of these egregious actions that have been taken by this, by five members of this council. When you talk about lack of confidence, I'm looking at five, four of you right now. Council member Hardy, council member Becker, council member Chahal, council member Park. I have no confidence in you. You clearly do not understand good governance. And you have undermined many, many of the hard work, much of the hard work and the goodwill that has been done amongst this city and staff. And I would just like to close in saying you will rue this day. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, I'm going to go to public presentations. Is there any member of the public that would like to make a presentation? Debbie, go ahead, Debbie. Debbie? Okay, you're muted. There you go. Go ahead.
Thank you so very much. I appreciate it, Mayor. This is a sad day that our forty-nine or five have dismissed or taking action towards Deanna. First of all, I want to commend Deanna for her work with the city. And, you know, just noting, I saw her on here a few minutes ago. She put a smile on her face. What more could you ask for when you have people beating you up? This is just another reason why we will not be reelecting these individuals. So take it while you can, guys. You continue to make decisions on your own without discussing it with the people who voted you in. First, you fired Brian for no reason and now you're taking action against Deanna. I think this is a strike three against you all. You think you're doing okay. I'm sure that you, Jed thinks you're doing okay because he is benefiting from your stupidity. Now that Jed is under investigation, it's only a matter of time before the county and the grand juries opens investigations on each and every one of you as you're leaving the city in ruins. Your settlement with the forty-niners netting nothing for Santa Clara since concerning the parking situation is unacceptable. Literally, the city gained nothing by you creating some settlement behind closed doors without the mayor or anyone else involved, including the city attorney. What's next, forty-nine or five? Oh, I know. You want to take control of our police department by changing who elects the police chief. Another step for Jed and yourself to control the city of Santa Clara and give Jed everything he wants. This is unacceptable. The people that elected you and put you in office expect you to speak for them, not for yourselves. And all those smirks on your face is unacceptable. You in particular, Karen, and of course, Jane doesn't even bother to show up for whatever reason. He doesn't want to be involved because he wants to be reelected. But I got news for you guys. You aren't going to be reelected. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Jeff, go ahead, Jeff.
Karen, Anthony, Raj and Kevin, I appreciate your bravery in your actions today. I want you to know that I will do my best to support you going forward and making sure that you get reelected. Thank you. That is all.
Thank you. Bob, go ahead, Bob.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I really do not know what to say. I've listened to some previous speakers. The speaker right before me was Suge James. Treasurer in, in his account for his, his campaign. But what I'm really upset with is the other two speakers. Herbeer Bertier was financed by this forty-niners and she lost her bid for city council. Mike Solers, the ex-chief of police, has been a friend of mine for many, 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 many years. But he spoke against the city manager based on the experiences or what he's been told by the forty-niners. He had a vote of no confidence by his police force. And the city manager took appropriate actions. But what's really sad is our city council fired the city manager at this time when we're coming out of pandemic, when we're trying to get things done. And the city manager has been running this city well. You on city council do not run this city, believe it or not. You set policies. That's it. We have no city manager. We have no city attorney. We have Jed York. Jed York is running five of our city council members. That will end and it will end very soon. If you've noticed, and I'm sure most of you have, there's a lot of chatter going on, on some news sites, on some blogs about recalls. I said that I was not going to take a stance on this. But I cannot let my city go down any further. We are going to start a recall against certain count, council members and you will know who you are. And, and thank you, Mayor. I'm still talking to the council. But we cannot wait till the next election to vote out Hardy and Chahal. We have to start today and we will. Believe me, we will. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, IK Onkar.
Hello, this is Herbeer. I'm not sure why they keep showing up. But anyways, thank you for the opportunity. I know this is not easy. This is a very difficult decision. And it doesn't feel good for anybody to, you know, terminate someone. The reality is this is not personal. I can objectively understand because I provide objective reasons. And I know Bob canceled to pronounce my name, but that's okay. The reality is you guys aren't used to what good governance looks like. And I know you're scared. You want to, you know, pick at these guys. You want to bully. You want to make, you know, fun. You want to try to find ways to constantly use branding that's been, uh, you know, communicated to you to make these four, these four council members look like they're bad guys. They're not, but don't be afraid. This is what happens when you let leaders choose a city council that was governed and run by one or two people. And thankfully, thankfully, we got district voting. And after we did that, guess what? We were, we don't separate this power and control that this old council had and brought in fresh blood. And you may be afraid and you're going to keep picking and fighting, but guess what, guys? We live in the same city. So be careful how much ugly crap you say on this call and how much you say about each other because we all have to live together. And, you know, you also have to remember, I still live in the city. You still live in the city. Our council members still live in this city. So be careful of the false and fake threats you make because you have to stand up to those. We're here for the city, not for each individual person's power, trying to put the next person in power. Stop playing that old game. This is, this is a city that deserves to have good benefits and deserves to have good leadership. Allow that to happen. Now, if we hadn't, if this kind of situation, you know, was taking care of the, at the beginning, we wouldn't be in this position as we are now. The truth is, at the end of the day, we are here because of the bad decisions made by certain leaders prior to district voting. And we have to clean that up now. Will it be difficult? Yes. Will there be difficult and hard times ahead? Yes. But there will be much better times after that. And what's happened today is because of the bad management of the previous council and leadership that put us in this position. So do not please play games and try to put your marketing and branding, trying to make these people out to be bad people. You should ask for a bit better and you should expect it. Stop sucking up to people just to make yourself look like you're a powerful person or you have something important to do in the city. Do something good for the city and guess what? You will be important. But sticking around sucking up to people just because you want power is not going to make you any more important or make you any more favored. Make all the threats you want. There's new blood in this city and we're not going to put up with people who make false threats and have fake news and have nothing better in their life to do but to hold on to the past. Let the future come. Let the good community benefits come. Let people get what they deserve, which is a powerful city, a healthy city, and where the people get the benefits they deserve. Thank you to the four of you for being brave, for standing up to the bullies and not letting your.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Lori, go ahead, Lori. Lori, there you go. Yes.
Thank you very much. First, I would like to say congratulations to our city council. I would like to say that I think I would have a big smile on my face if I made seven hundred thousand plus a year. Plus bringing friends in and bringing them, boosting them up and over the people that we already have that are making two thousand plus a year. Let me ask a question, everybody. For days and days and months, you've been talking about how the forty-niners are funding the five. It's a joke. Bring your proof and put it in writing because it's a joke. I'm a citizen that lives in Santa Clara. I know these people may not, might not know all the city council members well, but I do know that they're not backed by the forty-niners. That's the tactic of the forty-niner sisters that brought the forty-niners here to Santa Clara. Remember? I was also there voting the forty-niners in twenty years ago, whatever it was, when Don Taliajon's school was being, being made. So let's remember where all this came from. I have to say, the last thing that I heard from a gentleman speaking about how Herbeer was backed by the forty-niners, that was all paid stuff from Kathy Watanabe and it's not true. I ended up meeting this, this wonderful lady and finding out that what, where her heart was with this city, not with what was, had been going on in the city council for years gone by. So first of all, we, the city, we're tired of the cronies. We're tired of everybody trying to have just a few people run a city and get paid over and over and over for the last decades. I do know that certain people, maybe the mayor owns apartment complexes. But then also there's lots of different things that people own. And so it's, it's good for them to, to be able to be in her position. But you know what? All that's over. All the threats from everybody else, you know what? It's not going to work because now people are finally seeing that what has been happening is not okay. Our city will be better. We will bring somebody in that will take it over and not have to be paid this astronomical fee for doing what. So thank you very much. Congratulations to the council. Let's get this, let's make our city back to what it used to be years, years ago.
Thank you. Edward, go ahead, Edward, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, talk about that recall that we can't even trust our voting system right now. You know, just an example I want to give is you think about all the thousands of people that showed up to Trump rallies compared to Biden where there was twenty people that would show up to his rally. It's obvious there was voter fraud, massive voter fraud. I mean, we don't even know if these people are legit that are in office right now. So I, yeah, I would like to have, you know, people maybe come forward and maybe come forward with an audit and see what can be done there. Because what's happened to our city, county and our state especially has just been ridiculous. Our economy's in shambles. Industrial buildings are sitting empty. Retail buildings are sitting empty. It's just crazy, the things that have been going on lately. I appreciate this time of, and have a nice day.
Thank you, Edward. Chris, go ahead, Chris.
Um, yeah, I just, um, a couple of things I'd like to say. One is for unit nine. We're disappointed that the council didn't take a more thoughtful and deliberate approach to thinking through this matter. It's very complex. There's a lot of things that are at play that really should be thought about, considered, a plan put together and then acted. You certainly have the right to take the action you took. It's the manner in which it was taken and the effect that that has on the city and it could be large. Second off, I don't know where all this hate is coming from on this call and all these threats that are being talked about. But I want to remind everybody that there's a thousand employees that run this city. It's not just the city manager and the executive staff. It's everybody, all the way down to people that are living next to you in the city that are part of the city. That's who's running this. If, if the council wants to make a decision to remove a city manager for a certain reason, there's a process they can go through and they can do it the right way. The fact that we now have no city manager and no a city attorney and the plan is in a week, we'll talk about it. That's scary for somebody that's in the city and trying to run the city. Any business that would lose its leadership like that, that's impactful. And so a more thoughtful approach was expected and it's disappointed that it was not. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else under public presentations? Assistant city clerk under public presentations. Do we have any?
Uh, yes, Madam Mayor, I've received. There was one more email that came in. Uh, this is from Nancy B. Agini. I am a member of the planning commission, but I'm writing on my own. The infighting on our city council is just embarrassing. I'm not interested in getting to the weeds with all the issues entangled in what appears to be the focus of tonight's closed session. To be brief, I see no problem with following the assistant city attorney's advice. It is sound and can only be viewed as careful. Please hire outside counsel to advise on this matter. End of comment.
Is there anything else?
Just a moment.
Just double check.
I went to sleep, sorry.
While you're looking, I have, we're still in public presentations. I have Sandy. Go ahead, Sandy. Sandy? Can we un, or unmute yourself, please? Sandy? Sandy Myers, Sandy? Sandy, you can speak if you'd like. Sandy, there you go.
I'm sorry.
There you go.
Okay, I'm a little bit confused because I did send two emails and they didn't go through. But I have to support the city council and what they've done. I am, have always been amazed at the amount of the salary plus all of the additional staff that has been hired. I worked at City Hall. City Hall East Wing used to have several departments in them and now they just have the city manager. And the cost to that, when you have employees that are not getting their step increases and are not getting raises that didn't get her hero pay is just, in my opinion, disgusting. And as far as the leadership that she's providing to the city, I'd like to know how many times she actually set foot in City Hall to do business during, since the pandemic happened and even before that. Because it's my understanding, it is very minimal. Uh, I have been to City Hall more than what I have heard she has. Then the fact that she did that interview to the Mercury News stating that the city council was the reason that the cities, that the employees were leaving their employment in droves. That is not the case. The case is the management. The case is the non-recognition of their dedication and their work status. So as far as I'm concerned, her and all of her minions that she has brought in are a stain on this city. The fact that as city citizens, we are paying for services that used to be free or very minimal. But we're paying her and all of her people so much money. It, it's, you know, a misuse of funds at the very least. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Sandy. Did you find any assistant city clerk comments?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for your patience. There are no public presentations on e-comment and in regards to the last speaker. Um, I have looked at three different email addresses and I do not see her name.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. Reports of members and special committees? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion and second to adjourn. Assistant city clerk roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Watanabe?
Yes.
Councilmember Chahal?
Yes.
Councilmember Hardy?
Yes.
Councilmember Park?
Yes.
Councilmember Becker?
Yes.
Mayor Gilmore?
Yes. That passes six to zero with one absence, and this meeting is adjourned.